Good evening, folks. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda is a special proclamation presentation, which is in support of NAMI Piedmont proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I'd like to invite NAMI Piedmont Executive Director, Mr. Robert White, to the podium. The proclamation states, "Whereas the mental health of the City of Tegu K residents is essential to the continued well-being of our families, businesses, schools, and communities, and whereas each business, school, agency, organization, citizen have a responsibility to promote mental health awareness and wellness through education, advocacy, and support. And whereas the City of Tegu K and the City Council have partnered with NAMI Piedmont to raise awareness of community-based mental health services for children, young adults, and their families. And whereas mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health by focusing on their ability to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our community, but also enriches the culture of our community, NAMI Piedmont is committed to inspiring hope, facilitating recovery, and building better lives for those with mental health. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Tegu K, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Tegu K and encourage all to increase their understanding and awareness of mental health. And to know that you are not alone, and we, as a community, support you."
On behalf of NAMI Piedmont, Tricane, I want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for what you're doing for mental awareness. As you probably may not know, one out of five adults have some type of mental illness issue in the family, and one out of six of our teenagers do. And you can just think what's going to happen after the pandemic. So we've got a lot of work to do. What you're doing here, declaring next month as our Mental Awareness Month, we've got a lot of work to do, and this is just a small token of what we can do together, is build these strong relationships and look after our community when it comes to mental wellness. So we thank you for that.
Now we'll move on to our next presentation, which is a proclamation recognizing Spring Pick Me Up Week, Earth Day, and National Arbor Day 2022. Proclamation recognizing Spring Pick Me Up Week, Earth Day, and National Arbor Day 2022, whereas April 23rd through April 30th is Spring Pick Me Up Week in the City of Tegu K. And whereas, in celebration of Earth Day on April 22nd and the 150th anniversary of National Arbor Day on April 29th, the city recognizes the outstanding collaboration and efforts of Keep America Beautiful, Palmetto Pride, Keep York County Beautiful, City of Tegu K staff and volunteers who worked to keep Tegu K beautiful. And whereas, the city will offer reduced costs for curbside pickup of large items when scheduled through the city and encourage all residents to recycle properly. Pick up litter in our parks and open spaces and volunteer to help Tegu K be beautiful. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Tegu K, do hereby proclaim April 23rd through the 30th, 2022, as Spring Pick Me Up Week in this community, and we call upon all citizens to join in the efforts of our city staff to volunteer to support Spring Pick Me Up and celebrate Earth Day on April 22nd. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. Seeing that we have no one signed up for public comments, we will move to the next item on the agenda, item three, approval of minutes. Council, you have all received the minutes for our regular council meeting on March 21st. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes stand as approved and submitted. The next item on the agenda is item four, committee reports. First up, Economic Development Commission.
So, the EDC met on March 28th. There were enough people there to have a quorum. There was discussion of the Donnie Shell Golf Tournament, and he had said that this was the most successful one that he had had. Discussed a few different options as to what we could do to make it better. This fall, really just waiting on Donnie to commit to come back, and then we'll discuss everything else. Fair amount of discussion about the new development at Graceland, Game Off, whatever it is that we wish to call it now. More on that later, Charlie. Did discuss rebates on fees to new businesses, trying to set a structure up for that. And retail strategies, our partner's been helping us recruit people. They do have a new regional recruitment plan. They've been big on big-box chains and, you know, things like that, and they're looking at regional businesses to come in this way. And they have reached out to possible tenants at the new development. And then we threw around some names of this area, and we're torn between Paris Promenade and Shane's Creek. He was not in favor of Shane's Creek because it sounds too much like something else. And that concludes the EDC portions.
I do have one update for you regarding the Donnie Shell. I do know that he and Pinnacle are in discussions about a five-year deal for them coming back for the next five years.
Awesome.
That is in works right now.
Good, good.
Thank you, Gus. Ms. Britt, if you could update us on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
And I'm glad Shane was able to fill in for me at the Economic Development, because apparently there was good discussion.
We would have put your name in there somehow, but see, now it's Shane, it's on him.
Well, the Planning Commission met on the April 4th, where a quorum was present with four members in attendance. Newly-appointed members were sworn in by Mayor Gray, with two reappointed members being among those absent. Those appointees will be sworn in prior to the next regular meeting, one of those this evening, and one next week. Since the three members were absent, the election of officers and the adoption of the March meeting minutes were deferred, as well as discussion on the 2022 work program. Consideration and discussion was given to the recommendation regarding the amendment to the PDD formerly known as GAME ON, and the annexation and rezoning of the two additional parcels to the PDD, and I'll provide that recommendation later in your agenda. Under public comments, Mr. Kyle Schultz addressed the commission regarding the potential for allowing short-term rentals within the city. There was quite a bit of discussion on that. He did come in and meet with me and our staff, and we went through the why this was prohibited activity, the process that we went through in 2018 with council, and also talked to him about the consideration for bed and breakfast, which is a conditional approval only by council.
Next item on the agenda is 5A, appointments to the Park and Rec Ad Hoc Committee. Council has submitted their nominations for the committee. City Manager, if you could please present the top nominees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your top nominees, and I do want to say thank you to the 20-plus people that applied. Great turnout in response for that. But your top nominees are James Rony, Austin Keller, Nancy Nicholson, Christie Scott, Trish Schneider, Kristen Tinger, or Tigner, and Amanda Weber. Those are your top nominees that you'll need to do a motion in a second on.
Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to appoint the nominees, as stated by the City Manager, to the Parks and Rec Ad Hoc Committee.
Have a motion, Ron Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Scott. Having a motion and a second. Ask the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, item 6A, consideration of proposal to update the impact fee study. The state requires local governments who have enacted impact fees to update their impact fee study every five years. The city enacted its impact fees a little over four years ago. Tischler and Blyce is the consultant the city used when it first enacted impact fees and are uniquely qualified to conduct this update for us. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal from Tischler Blyce to update the impact fee study in an amount not to exceed $51,000 and authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you, Gus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Having a first and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is 6B, Trinity Phase II Bond Reduction Request. The council previously approved an original letter of credit in the amount of $113,728.13. The request is to reduce the LOC to $30,712.50. The city engineer has reviewed the estimate and has found that the reduced amount is appropriate for the completion of the remaining site development work. The city attorney has reviewed and approved a draft of the amended performance, labor, and materials surety agreement to accompany the LOC reduction. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Mayor and council, motion to approve the Trinity Phase II Bond Reduction Request and Amendment to Performance, Labor, and Materials Surety Agreement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Tom, thank you for the second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Britt, if you could come to the podium and provide the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The Planning Commission has worked with the developer during two previous design workshops in February and March on the final concept plan and the amendment to the PDD development standards. Minor changes were also implemented following the public hearing on March 21st. Therefore, at their regular meeting on April 4th, the commission voted to recommend that council approve the amendment and rezoning as presented.
The Planning Commission has worked with the developer during the two previous design workshops in February, March on the final concept plan and the amendment to the PDD development standards. Minor changes were also implemented following the public hearing on March 21st, which the Planning Commission reviewed at their April 4th meeting. The applicant is proposing to amend the Plan Development District formerly known as GAME ON by a change in the zoning text and development standards. The purpose of the amendment is to provide clarity in specific permitted uses and implement the vision as outlined in the city's 2019 update to the comprehensive plan as a regional mixed-use district. The previous development standards of the PDD formerly known as GAME ON was focused on a large private recreational enterprise with supplemental issues being commercial and residential. The current proposed amendment is centered on a Main Street-style commercial and residential uses that will support and sustain the commercial areas. I yield to you, Scott.
Just a comment before we put this to a motion or a vote. I just wanted to share with the public that there has been a lot of passion about this PDD and annexation, and I'm grateful for that. There was a lot of public comment in the last council meeting and prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and I'm very happy to tell you that in the last Planning Commission meeting on the 4th, as Ms. Britt indicated and as Mayor Gray indicated, our developer that has been working on this project graciously listened very attentively to all the comments that were made at that time and made adjustments based on every single public comment. And I think you'll be pleased with what you see if this project gets off the ground. You'll be happy to see how this developer will continue to work with our city to make it a great place to live.
Anybody else have any more comments? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Plan Development District standards formerly known as GAME ON.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gus. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I call the question. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 6E, the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex and rezone TMS 644-000038 and 644-000042, from RUD in the county to PDD in the city as a part of a 100% annexation petition. The applicant is proposing to annex these two additional parcels as a part of the amendment of the Plan Development District formerly known as GAME ON. The properties to be annexed were originally shown as future additions to the previous PDD concept plan. The applicant now has these properties under contract and has requested that they be annexed as an addition to the PDD. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve first reading of an ordinance to annex and rezone TMS 644-000038 and 644-000042, from RUD in the county to PDD in the city as part of a 100% annexation petition.
Second. I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Ryan's trying to keep you on schedule, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate that.
After that pause between 6C and 6D, I was trying to get us back.
Now you're doing it again, Ryan.
See what I get up here? Geez.
There was a lot of documents between the two. I get it, I'm scrolling too.
All right. Next item is 6F, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the FY 2021/2022 budgets as it relates to the trash/recycle fee schedule, development services fee schedule, and the business license fee schedule. Second. Easy, easy, big guy. The city has been notified that signature waste will be passing through a fuel surcharge in accordance with their contract. At council's request, staff has also looked at business license fees and commercial permit fees in an effort to be attractive to commercial builders. This ordinance will amend those fees by allowing the city to pass through the fuel surcharge and eliminate it without further action of a council once signature waste removes it. It lowers the commercial permit fees and reduces business license fees on an average of 5%. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the FY 2021 and 2022 budgets as it relates to the trash/recycle fee schedule and the business license fee schedule.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, this is a clerical error on our mistake, just in the heading of that ordinance. If Mayor Protim Heislop could amend his motion to also include development service fee schedule, it's included in the body of the ordinance, it was omitted from the title of the ordinance, just to make sure we capture that in the motion.
Development fee?
Yes, the development fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to amend my motion and include the development fee schedule.
That'll work. We can make that work.
I'll still second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item seven, the City Manager's report. City Manager Fundenberg, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I've only got a few, just a few brief things for you this evening. First is, our first concert of the season is this Saturday at Rundy Park. Festivities will begin at 6:00 PM. We were alerted late in the game that apparently we've got a prom being held up here tonight, or that same night, so we are working through the parking situation on that, and we'll have things pushed out this week regarding that. But there are parking changes related to the concerts at Rundy going forward, just because of the massive congestion it causes on the north end of Tegu K Drive and on Windward. So we are working through some alternates there because we expect the clubhouse to be pretty busy that night with our Fort Mill High School folks celebrating their prom. We're happy that they're able to. Next on my report, the deer study was completed. Would like to schedule a special council meeting where we can have representatives from SEDNR present to discuss with council the study's findings and what they actually mean. Right now, I'm thinking either May 9th or May 23rd, if that works for council. If those dates do work, we'll reach out to DNR and have them schedule one of them to come up. But envisioning that more as a question and answer for council with DNR after a brief presentation from DNR. So that way, y'all are able to continue to gather information before you're looking at any type of decision on either way. But it would be a public, open meeting, just like we do now, but need to try to schedule that time with DNR. So if y'all could look at those dates and just shoot me an email tomorrow, so we're looking at either May 9th or May 23rd, those are the Monday before your May meeting or the Monday after your May meeting. I'm trying to get that done before Memorial Day weekend, so just let me know on that. And then lastly, we are now in budget season for our 2023 budget, believe it or not. I need council to send me any projects or items that y'all want to see as a priority in the coming budget year. If y'all can send that to me by next Friday, April 30th, that would be great. Yeah, that way, if we've got things I need staff to research, get pricing on, and things like that for our upcoming budget discussions and budget conversations, they can get working on those. So just think about what you want to see done. If there, you know, if you want to see a sidewalk here, or a fire truck there, or whatever it is, and partridge in a pear tree, let me know what it is, all right? So that way, we can have staff go gather that information and can incorporate that into our budget process. So, and Mayor, that's all I've got for you this evening.
Just wanted to make a comment that the 147 items we gave you in the workshop probably didn't give us enough to work on, I guess.
Want to narrow that focus down just a little bit for next year.
Exactly. I figured that's what you're asking for.
Instead of us narrowing it down for y'all, we want to hear from y'all, what is the most important.
Thank you.
All right.
Does anybody have any further questions for our City Manager? Okay. Next item is item eight, council comments.
I'm quick and easy. You know, obviously, fire, police, thanks for all you do, first responders out there, staff, Planning Commission, I know you guys have put a lot of time, energy, and effort into the last two developments that have been proposed here, so really appreciate the effort and hard work that you guys put in there. Hope everybody had a happy Easter and come on spring.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll echo Ryan, always support our first responders. We appreciate all you do. Planning Commission, does an awful lot of work you've done for us, and we appreciate the time and effort you put into it. I hope everybody did enjoy the weekend with their families, and, you know, the first concert's coming up. I thoroughly enjoyed the concerts and food truck rallies, but I think I'm going to miss this Saturdays because my son's getting married, so he probably wouldn't be happy if I didn't do that. So congratulations, Nick and Haley, I'll say from up here. Love you guys, looking forward to celebrating with you. That's it for me.
Mr. Shirley.
Yes, sir. All five members of council that are seated up here at one point or another made it known to public that they were for limited and smart growth in Tegu K as we went forward. And I want to commend council and Planning Commission for working diligently on the projects that we have approved since we have sat here on council, that adjustments have been made, compromises have been made, and I believe that we've taken a couple of developments that would have contributed to density, and now we're going to be contributing a whole lot more in some more positive ways to our city. So thank you for the efforts that you all made and Planning Commission, it's been a delight to work with you. I'll share a quick story with you that happened to me this weekend regarding our first responders, because I always want to try and bring some attention to the hard work and dedication that they have to our city. I was making a purchase at one of our local businesses, I won't say which one, it was a Saturday, not a Sunday, if that's any indication. And when I left, actually when I walked in the business, I saw a man that was in obvious distress. It looked to me, just from my layman's eyes, like there may be an overdose getting ready to happen. I don't know what really was going on with the man, but he was in bad distress and really having a tough day. I called the local police number, they dispatched a police officer to see what was going on with this gentleman, and I don't know the officer's name, but I want to tell you that I saw a level of care and kindness and professionalism from a police officer in Tegu K that is rare these days, to see that from anyone, let alone a law enforcement officer that has to enforce the law. And I really commend that fellow for the way he handled it. In the end, it looked like the fellow was getting a ride somewhere, but he was handled with terrific care and professionalism, and hats off to you, Chief Joey, and to your staff for the way our citizens are taken care of. I appreciate that. Thank you all for all of your participation in the meetings, and thank you, council.
Mr. Heislop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just echo first responders, law enforcement, thanks so much for everything you do. Planning Commission and staff, you work diligently, I see Ryan out there laughing at me. Thanks for everything you did, working with the National Paul and developers, taking public comment input and trying to make this development better for the community. And Parks and Rec, I just want to give a shout out to Dustin. The spring season's in full swing, I see the kids out there all the time, great job. Thanks for everything you do there. And finally, I'm just, I know it's not a lot, but the 5% reduction in business licenses is, it's a start, and, you know, it's a help, every little bit helps a little, and maybe more in the future, but I'm excited about that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council. Appreciate your comments. My comments a little bit different. Thank you, first responders, for everything that you guys do. Chief, I would like to, Chief Cross, we'd like to thank you for letting us utilize your facility this week. Folks, there are a tremendous amount of people around the world that are hurting right now. And we are so fortunate to live in a place where the bombs are not exploding in our houses and on our heads. I would ask that we all could come together as a city, come together as a people and a nation to support those around the world that are hurting and need our help. I would ask that we would put aside our small differences and see the big picture. I was not in any shape or form enlightened the way that I was when we had our presentation at the PD this week. Folks, the hurt is real. The killing and the needless violence that the Ukrainian people are going through right now, it's just, it's totally beyond anything that we could possibly fathom as United States citizens. So, I would ask for prayers and thoughts for those folks in Ukraine. I'd also like to thank everyone for their hard work. Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, I'd like to thank you for your hard work this week. Dustin, seeing the kids out there playing and having a good time, buddy, it just, it does my heart good. I wish I was back in those days of coaching those kids because it just brings such joy to me. But I would like to thank you guys for doing such a great job with our kids. And that's about all I have. So, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and being here at the meeting and showing an interest in Teguka. Thank you. Our last item on the agenda is an executive session for the discussion of contractual matters related to intergovernmental agreement with York County related to the jail services. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor and council, make a motion to go to executive session.
Second. I have a motion with Scott and a motion by Ryan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We were in executive session.
I'll be on council, dude. I'm retiring.
Second.
You'll be two open seats in two years.
We had a motion and a second to come out of executive session. There were no votes taken at that time. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting. No? Okay.
Make a motion to table item 10A.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's unanimous. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting. Having a motion and a second, quickly. I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.